Hey, everyone. Just give everybody a few minutes to sign in. Thanks, everybody who's joined so far. I think we need one more person before we can call the meeting to order. So just hang out for a second. Les, did anybody say they couldn't make it? I know Mahina is gonna be late and Keith is also gonna be late if he's able to join.
Not that I'm not. No one contacted me. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Since we are still waiting, I'm gonna throw this out. If anybody knows of a lawyer who wants to do practice environmental law, we just got authority to hire an air attorney. So send them our way. Good work, no pay, but really rewarding.
Okay. You're looking for an extern, basically?
No, 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 we're looking for a lawyer.
Oh, a lawyer. Okay, you said no pay though.
Well, I mean, compared to the rest of the world.
Okay. Got it. Got it. Okay, just checking. I if I if I hear of anybody looking for something, I'll let you know. Mary, you had something?
But Mike Tulang is not joining us because he has choir practice with commandment schools.
Okay, good to know. So.
I was gonna try to. I have a two o'clock meeting that I supposed to make a presentation to. I was gonna try to drop out of this for about 15 minutes, but then we're gonna lose quorum, aren't we?
Shoot, yes, that is.
I'll email them and tell them I'll try to get there at the end. Their meeting is from two to three.
Okay, is because Mahina can't join until three. And Keith is me. He had. He had another meeting come up, so he may be able to join, but I don't know for sure, which is a problem.
The time for Keith.
Yeah, I think this was. This was an unavoidable conflict, something that came up.
What about Steph?
Stephanie told us she would be in the forest.
Yeah, she stuff says she was gonna be able to make it. So, okay, well.
All right.
Maybe, maybe. Yeah, Mary, it's okay. No, I understand. Kathy, I have a question. So we had essentially two things on the agenda. One is to go through all of the legislation and have the council decide what do we want to testify on, if anything? And, you know, what would our testimony be? And then the second action item was gonna be a more general action item. Approving, you know, essentially, Robin and I to draft testimony based on what the council approves. We have quorum now. So would it be inappropriate for me to switch those action items? With the understanding that we're only going to be approved to draft testimony if the rest of the group agrees, these are bills we want to go with. I know it's hard once we lose quorum, because how do we then decide, hey, this is something we want to testify on?
So we have a half an hour, right? Are we able to just whip through all of these bills?
Okay, I think we. I think the thought was no, but I'll let Robin, if you can do it, because we can continue discussion after Mary leaves. We just can't take action, right? Or can we? Can we not even have them? We can still have discussion, just no action.
They're only.
Let me. Let me just email them and tell them that there's a quorum problem here and see what they do.
Okay, yeah, I don't want you to have to miss your other meeting. So, okay, before, yeah, if we can just try to whip through them quickly, at least decide which ones we think we want to testify on and go from there.
And so maybe what you could do is go through the ones that are actually moving first.
Okay. Okay, Robin, I'll turn it over to you then.
All right. Well, in terms of time, I hope you all got Les sent out a Mark current as of this morning list. I went through it all this morning and tried to show you which ones have recommendations to go to committees, which ones do not. There are two, if you go down the list that are having a hearing tomorrow. So why don't we talk with those two first and just see whether people, how people feel on them? So look down your list. The first one would be Senate Bill 1034. And that is a bill that Kathy probably knows more about than I. That's the one that deals with sunshine and boards. Kathy, do you want to cut? You raised this to us. Thank you. Do you want to comment on this one?
You know what? I just raised it because Onana wanted. I don't have any comments on it. I actually haven't even read it. I just pulled it up and I haven't been following it. I have. So sorry, I haven't followed it.
Okay, if you I have on the right hand side, the last column H, please feel free to ignore those or disagree with them. They're just highlights that I took down as I read through this to help me remember them. But in looking at my notes, it's the same bill as 880, House Bill 880. And you'll see it says three options for meetings allows for virtual, but requires a place for the public to view and requires that minutes be kept. That's a very, very simple simplification of it. All of you, I hope, had a chance to read it, either of the two bills. Any comments from you? Do you have feelings about it? Do you want us to? Do you want the EC to take a stand on this or submit comments of any kind?
Yes, Robin, I mean, I think at this point, right, are if we do submit testimony, it's going to be late since the hearing is at 9:15 a.m.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Or not. I mean, anybody in the group want to submit testimony on that or Mary?
Well, it's. This has been pretty well vetted. A lot of organizations have looked at it. And it's kind of a, you know, everybody pretty much agreed to it before the session even started. But this is how they were gonna go. So it's gonna happen whether we do anything or not. It's just a matter of do we want to be on record saying that we'll play along? That's how. And sometimes now some of the committees are not even allowing late testimony. They're just even if you were to submit your testimony, it won't show up in the record. But I don't. I haven't figured out exactly which committees those are.
I've seen some late testimony, so. It's not all. Well, given what Mary said, and in the interest of moving along quickly, I'm not hearing any great passion for submitting comments. Should we? And that fact that it is tomorrow, should we just move and not say anything on this one? I see Michael Roy shaking heads. Ron, you okay with that? Everybody? Okay, so no comment on that. Okay, good. Then the next one would be.
Tomorrow's hearing is water land, and you could. There's another hearing gonna be scheduled for judiciary. So you could always chime in at judiciary if you really had a burning desire to.
Okay. Take a look now that the one down at the bottom, SB 1292. That's up tomorrow as well. And I was hoping Roy or Ron would have some thoughts about this. Anybody else? It's pretty specific. Anybody have any comments or thoughts? We don't have to. I just want to give everybody a chance.
This is.
Well, I I was alerted to this bill by someone at Commission on Water Resources Management. And they're opposing it. I believe that it addresses an issue that's that's important. Many times, it seems like bills are introduced to the legislature that are very draconian in the knowledge that there will be a lot of compromise. So you ask for what you want and a lot more. And then if it gets cut down to half size, you're satisfied. And then the testimony against it is always over the top, too. It's gonna end the world, etc., etc. So this, as this Kabuki plays out, in the end, we get a law. I don't know if we want to mince our way onto the stage and make some noise, too. But the the truth is that private wells in in the state are not required to undertake any Chapter 343. And all wells on state land or funded, you know, by the State Department of Agriculture or something like that, or the county, do have to do it. Some wells are in very sensitive areas in aquifers that have issues where use is near or oversustainable. Some wells are very large and impact the aquifer in a lot of different ways. Some wells are very small and take advantage of brackish water that is, for the most part, barely used and could help help with agriculture, but they're burdened by the the need to prepare an EA. So I spoke with a person at the Commission on Water Resources Management and said, while I do oppose the bill as written, I think, you know, there needs to be a discussion about this. And there are some, you know, gray areas that perhaps we could help people on so that they aren't killed with regulatory requirements for building a well that their neighbors can all do with no problem. So, you know, that's my take.
Is it important, do you think, Ron, for us to? I mean, those are very helpful comments. Do you think it's important enough for the EC to submit that? Is that something you would write up and we submit as comments, not oppose, not support, but just comments?
I would leave it up to you guys. I think, you know, the one real huge flaw in the bill in my mind is that it amends the chapter, the water code, not Chapter 343. So you're gonna have these conflicts where, you know, you're amending one law, but the law that you're actually talking about is not the one you're amending. I see a number of things in some of these laws, a number of errors in some of the laws like that.
That's a good point, Ron. I mean, and I haven't looked at this bone in detail, but since you have, I'll ask you the question. Do you think that this exemption would fit under the the types of of actions that qualify for exemption that we currently have in statute and rules?
Yeah, not as written.
Right? Because if not, like you said, that that would be a flaw if it doesn't fit under one. Okay, good to know.
So I reviewed. I don't know if it's on this bill. I can't remember. But OEQC did submit testimony, is submit submitting testimony on all these bills. And what in? I don't know if it's this one, but they point out that this is something that could be, should be left to the exemption. The exemption provisions of your statute of the Environmental Council statute, that they have the ability to do this if they go to the exemption committee. So I don't know if that helps you guys.
Yeah, I saw Keith's testimony, and I'd say I pretty much agree with it and that because of that, maybe we could give this one a pass, especially if we have more pressing matters. I don't think it's gonna. I don't think the bill is gonna pass.
The only other thing I'd like to add is for those of us doing watershed work and water quality work, it's imperative that we know who's, how many straws are in the in the jug. And anytime we have an exemption that somebody doesn't have to tell us that they have a straw is not helpful.
Well, of course, there. I mean, the Commission on Water Resources Management does.
That's why they're opposing it. Yeah, it. Yeah, yeah.
You know, I think there's room for 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 working on this and making a lot better crafted bill. Maybe this will stimulate the discussion that gets in that direction.
Well, I don't. Forgive my ignorance of the process, and Mary, you can laugh at me for this, but I don't know how you guys could see Keith's testimony, since there's no testimony, no, no scheduled meeting. So where did you see it? I thought you weren't able to submit testimony before a meeting was scheduled.
Well, a little birdie sent it to me.
So he submitted it or Keith has submitted the testimony somewhere?
The the bill is scheduled for hearing tomorrow.
So Keith has submitted testimony on behalf of the Office of Environmental Quality Control, because he's the acting director.
So. The testimony is not on the state's website at this time.
I get it. We'll see it tomorrow.
Been circulating.
Why is it? You know, I looked at all the bills, and I couldn't find any testimony on any of them. They all said no testimony. Why is that?
It's essentially being posted the day of the hearing is when I'm finding the posted testimony, like right before the hearing. And I don't know who else has tried to testify, but I've been having issues where I've had to contact the chair of the committees right before the meeting, because I don't get the Zoom links. Or even, you know, thankfully, with Tuesday's hearing, the bills we were testifying on were later, you know, about an hour in. So I was able to contact staff, but I don't know if anybody else is having the same issue. I don't know if they're just, you know, misspelling my name in the email, and that's why I'm not getting it or or what. But we can talk about that later, but I'm just curious on tips for that, if we are gonna continue to testify, because it's kind of stressful having to scrounge for the link, you know.
Let me raise a question to you, Ron. If we were to ask you to to draft up the comments, not necessarily tonight, so you could submit it late, but to in case this moves forward in any way, to at least for have us to have us authorize you to prepare those. Would you be willing to do that? And is and Onana, is that a good idea to do it that way?
Yeah, I think that's fine, or even bullet points on, you know, our position. I'm happy to draft testimony on behalf of the council. If the council says we're gonna testify in a bill, if that helps, but for the substantive stuff, yeah, dividing and conquering, if folks are better suited to go ahead and draft that testimony, such as for this bill, Ron, you already have a lot of knowledge on it. I think that does make sense. And I know, you know, today, we're maybe we can run through this. So I think we're at a basic level, we need to decide, you know, which bills we're gonna testify on, and we're not focusing just on the ones that are having a hearing, you know, tomorrow, because some of these bills could be scheduled for hearing at any time during the session, right? So what we wanted to do was to streamline this process was, you know, go through these bills, see if there's anything we actually are interested in testifying on and approving us to do that. And then, you know, figuring out what our position is, because again, we want to make sure that whatever we testimony, we submit, the council is comfortable with. So.
Well, to answer your question, Robin, I would be willing to prepare some notes.
Okay, I think that would be very helpful, and that gives us some time. It doesn't have to be submitted tomorrow as comments. But I, Onana, tell me if I'm overstepping my my authority here as Chair of the Legislative Committee, but I want to get. I think we need a vote on this. And so my sense would be, I am I allowed to move?
Yeah, well, what do you? What do you guys to streamline the process? I don't know if it makes sense to vote on every single bill, or if we go through and say, these are the ones we're testifying on for the reasons we discuss and do it as a slate. So that there's one vote, or is the preference of this group to do a vote for every single bill? I'm just trying to think of timing, and, you know, we're gonna lose Mary in about 10 minutes. Kind of getting through.
I think we would only vote on those bills that we, you know, that anybody cares about. I'm sure there's gonna be a lot that no one gives, you know.
Sure, right. Yeah. Instead of having a vote on every single bill, does it make sense to figure out which ones we care about? And then.
I I'd prefer we do it, bill, one bill at a time. I know it's it's hard, but.
Me, too.
Okay, that's fine. We can do that. So I'll I'll hear a motion.
Okay, I move that we submit comments on SB 1292.
Do I have a second?
But actually, so wait a second. You want to submit comments? Are you gonna support or not support?
I I thought that we would submit comments. And my sense was that it's so early.
That's what I want. That's all I want. That just to be a. Thank you, Robin.
All right, so we do have a motion to submit comments on SB 1292. All those in favor? Hi. All right, so we have seven. Is Don abstaining? Because I don't know if this passes.
Agree, sorry.
No problem. Thank you. Sorry, it's just because we're at eight right now. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you, folks. Motion carries.
Okay, so those are the two that that were priority in terms of being heard tomorrow. I think that we can go. Now, it's up to you. We can now go back to the top and just work our way down. Or we can go to the ones that were already passed that and talk about them with that have had amendments, some of which we've testified on, some of which we haven't. That's up to you, however you want to do this.
I whatever. I defer to you. I think I want to, as long as we have everybody try to get to the ones that we would want to possibly testify on, whatever the more priority ones are.
Well, let's try this. Let's do it from the top and see how quickly I can move this through.
Okay.
If it if it drags and and we'll figure out something else. So let's start SB. I'm sorry, HB 361. And that was a supplemental environmental assessment about 15 years. Any comments on this one? Any thoughts?
So I guess I'll start. I mean, this kind of comes back to reminding me almost of what we tried to do in the rules. I got so much, you know, backlash with essentially having a shelf life. So, you know, that's essentially my my thought on it. And tie, you know, our current rules say that time in and of itself doesn't trigger a supplemental environmental impact statement. So I would say that, you know, if this does come up for hearing, we would point out, and maybe we do it in comments. I don't know if folks actually want to actively oppose it, but, you know, comments along those lines.
I'm actually in favor of it, and I'll tell you why. I had a lot of things during the rules that I wanted to move through related to reevaluation. And, you know, I was told no can, you know, we it's it's too unpopular with with many parties. They won't support it. I thought that those parties were being very short sighted. It was against their interests. There's clearly a lot of public support for some kind of shelf life. 15 years to me, you know, 15 years, I'm fine with that, really. I mean, in the Federal Highway Administration, they reevaluate every two years their documents. And in the state of Hawaii, we never reevaluate. The only time we reevaluate is if there's some sort of a green sheet exercise, which most agencies frankly aren't doing. The city and county probably is, DLNR maybe, maybe DOT. But the rest of the agencies aren't aren't doing that. It also provides for supplemental environmental assessment. I don't know if you saw that. But that's part of it as well, which I think is could be very useful. Instead of having to, now what you essentially do is have to withdraw your old EA and then make a new EA if you ever want to supplement it, because we have no provisions for a supplemental environmental assessment. I'm happy to see that. I'm a little concerned about the language about involves a renewable energy project. So if a hotel has solar panels, it's exempt because it's got some renewable energy. What what's that about?
That's my big objection. I don't know what it's about. I don't know why that was inserted in there.
And then, you know, Robin, you know, to your point, probably what you're thinking of is wind. You know, we know a lot more about the effects of wind power on on seabirds and other creatures now than we did 15 years ago. And, you know, 15 years, the state of our knowledge advances dramatically. So if people aren't gonna take a common sense approach and do a reevaluation like the feds do and all their agencies, then, yeah, I'm fine with this. Give it a damn shelf life.
Yeah, the issue to me was why do they exempt renewable energy projects? I just didn't understand that. So what do the rest of you think? Is this something you think the EC should comment on, or it hasn't, as you see, it hasn't been referred. It's got, I guess, three committees referred to, including finance, but it hasn't been scheduled and it hasn't moved. So. Any comments other than Ron's very thoughtful analysis, anybody?
I'd like to see us submit something just because we have the opportunity to say something about the shelf life, which was an issue for us, you know, a year, two years ago. It's not a new issue for us. It's not. And I and I completely agree with taking the the exemption out for renewable energy. That's 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 contra everything we're trying to accomplish here.
So is our sense that we should submit in support or that we should submit comments?
I would like to submit in support with the comment of the removing the renewable energy exemption.
Well, I'm guessing that we wouldn't get to support with the current group we have here. So I think I already see one no vote. So this might be true for a number of bills here. But I we probably could submit comments that included pros and cons kind of thing about it. Well, now I'm speaking for you, but we might as well not waste a lot of time if we're not gonna get there.
Yeah, I'll. Yeah, I won't waste time. I don't think I could support the bill, but I would be on board to submit comments. I think we have differing views on points of this bill. But again, we do have to come together as a council on it. So and I also don't want to be, you know, if everybody feels strong about supporting, I don't want to be the one person holding up a vote. That's not my intent.
I'll hold it up as well. I think I I move that the council submit comments on HB 361.
Do I have a second?
Second, second, sure.
All right. Thanks. Any further discussion?
I would only suggest that the comments include this discussion. I thought it was a really good one. We have mixed feelings about about this bill. We are concerned about the renewable energy, something about our history, I think, again, not to burden you, Ron, but you want to bullet point that since there's no rush on it?
I think I could do that, and I would also like to take up the point that Onana made about shelf life in general not being a very great idea. I do agree with that. On the other hand, I want to bring up the idea of the reevaluation as a way as a way to do it rather than the solution they've proposed here.
Okay, so there's a motion.
It's not only exempting renewable energy projects. It also examines housing projects that have started and not been completed as well as affordable housing and workforce housing. So that's a, there's a, it's a, there's a whole constituency of people out there for that issue.
Yeah, I guess they're trying to to come to a yes vote with 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 carving out those exemptions. I mean, the truth is that, you know, energy is not a energy is already carved out from Chapter 343 for for many projects, you know.
And I think our comments on that workforce, housing and affordable housing, I mean, I would propose that they be in line with, you know, to the extent it expands the current exemption that we have, you know, we caution against that generally, because the the exemption that we have in our rules was very narrow. that we have, um, you know, we caution against that generally because the, the exemption that we have in our rules was very narrow for those projects. Um, so, yeah, this one, you know, this one's a thinker. I don't, I think I, I'll, I'll certainly draft up some points. Mary, you bring up some good points. Ron's gonna draft up some points. Um, and this might be something that we have to look at, you know, together again at some point. I'm not really sure, just depending on when it comes up for hea- for hearing, um. But also we're trying to avoid that because these things move fast. So, okay, let's just, let's just keep going through with points on, on people's feelings on this so that we have it and we can work on drafting something and getting it in. Raise, raising all of the different sides of the issue.
So there's a, a motion on the floor to, um, submit comments.
All right. All those in favor of submitting comments on HB three sixty-one consistent with the discussion that we just had? Say aye. Okay. All right. Any opposed? Tess, are you, okay, any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. Thanks, everyone.
Uh, the next bill is HB four twenty-three. This one, um, duplicates, I'm not sure line by line, but it duplicates the, a bill that was introduced last year. And it establishes the Department of Environmental Protection. It has not, uh, moved. It's, uh, you can see a lot of conversation in there about invasive species. It, it collects environmental agencies or, or departments or whatever.
Robin, this is gonna die. This is a triple referral and it hasn't had any hearings and today's the last day for the first hearing.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, um, is HD one more current than, than HD in there? Because HD one, um, eliminated the environmental council. We're not even mentioned.
But you're on a different bill, Ron.
Oh, I am. Sorry, I'm on a different bill.
Yeah, we're on HB four two-three.
But, um.
Senate Bill nine sixty-eight.
But we aren't mentioned in that bill.
Yes, in this one.
Yeah, we're not in there. We're not part of the department.
It's too late.
You notice that? Chapter three forty-three isn't mentioned unless I have an old draft of the bill.
There's a Board of Environmental Protection that sounds very much like our job description or our definition.
But you see all the HRS is in there. Is chapter three forty-three here? OEQC's not in there.
Three forty, three forty-two.
Um, yes, it is. If you go down, it says environmental quality control, chapter three forty-one. I thought I'd seen that in there.
And if you look at page twenty-two.
Item number thirty on line nine.
Right.
What's it say?
Environmental quality control, chapter three forty-one.
But not three forty-three?
No.
Right?
It doesn't say.
Forty-three's not mentioned, right?
I don't see it.
Then then.
Environmental Council's not mentioned, right?
Student environment, environmental policy, chapter three forty-four.
Yeah, so it skips three forty-three.
Interesting.
It does mention the environmental council.
Where?
Uh, environmental quality control, so.
Right, right.
But three forty-one establishes the environmental council. The functions of the environment council is three forty-one dash six. And three forty-one talks, uh, three talks about the Office of Environmental Quality Control.
But then what happens? I mean, every other agency's mentioned in here.
Yeah, so maybe you just.
Not the environmental council.
Right, but, so on three forty-one six, it talks about the, um, the functions of the environmental council. Um, so maybe, maybe what we'll, you will have to do is if this bill moves forward, you can add the, um, make an amendment to add three forty-three as well.
Well, I guess Mary says it ain't moving forward, so maybe we can just forget about it.
Unlikely. It's unlikely. But, but the legislature can always re, um.
It could re-refer it.
Yeah, re-refer it to two, to two.
Okay, I was just gonna ask, you know, given.
My sense, Onana, correct me here, but my sense from our meeting with Lowen that this bill wasn't gonna move.
No, yeah, I don't think this one is gonna move, um, because she, she has, you know, the bill that they actually heard on Tuesday, it, it kind of does the same thing, right? And, and that one, I already had a hearing, so, you know. Yeah, so, so maybe we, we go, we redo this process instead of starting top to bottom. If it's true that bills that don't have a hearing as, as of today, aren't gonna get heard, then maybe we're focusing our.
If it has a triple referral.
Understood. Thank you.
So, yeah, looking at that, uh, Mary, you're, you're absolutely right. But going down the rest of the list, there, there's a, there's, there're mostly just two. There's one more senate bill, but in the House bills that we're talking about, they're, they're all just the two committees.
Okay.
Mary, when you say three, does that include finance? If, if, if finance is included and there's two other committees, is that considered three or is that two?
That's three. Finance is a committee.
Yeah. Um, okay, so then the next one, so on four twenty-three, my, I'm hearing you say no, or no comments, no, nothing on there. Okay, so, uh, the next one is um, it's six ninety-six, HB six ninety-six. And that has three committees. And there's no movement on it.
You wanna skip this one? Is that okay with the group?
Yeah, I, I oppose that bill. I understand why it was submitted, but I oppose it. So I don't know if we get anywhere any, anyway.
Um, so.
Mary, how do you feel about that bill?
It doesn't look like it has legs.
Would, if it did, would you support it? It's the Ho- Houho Nua bill, I would assume.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
I mean, there's a facility in Kauai and, and, uh, Tessie and Makahala can, can maybe speak to it. I've toured it. And I thought it was extremely, um, um, extremely well regulated, um, much better than Houho Nua was gonna be in terms of pollution control. And they were dealing with a whole lot of invasive spe- trees that they were putting in there. And now it seems like they'd have to do an EA for their stuff. I, I think, you know, it would discourage some, some, uh, plants that, um, probably, probably don't belong there, but, um, I'll let maybe Mark and Tessie'd want to talk about that.
That was my sense is that it would discourage duplication or our example from, from moving forward and, and I think, you know, local regulations are very important and good management is very important, but, um, I, I don't think this gets us there. We just need to get rid of albeja.
So on six ninety-six, we're, we're not gonna do anything. We're gonna let this one die. This got three committees, three referrals.
I don't think it's our coolly on. It, it's, you know, it has three forty-three in it, but it's not really our issue.
Yeah. Okay, so it sounds like always for Robin to get that.
Sorry, I was a neighbor. Sorry. So, what, what did you say, Onana?
No, no, I was gonna say it's, it sounds like we're, we're skipping this one. No comments.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, is that correct?
Yeah, fine. Okay, so we don't need to vote on that. Okay, so the, the next one is House Bill eight four-two. And that's one that's had a hearing. It was, it was passed with amendments. Both Keith and Onana testified. Um, this is that hub issue that was raised last year.
Yes, I'll let you folks know that I did submit comments on behalf of the council for this one, but only because this was something we had previously voted on in twenty twenty. So I recycled our comments on it and, um, you know, pointed out to them that we provided comments that pretty much all of what the bill is proposing is already done by OEQC with the exception of allowing, you know, creating a platform, allowing for online commenting and OEQC already submitted testimony and why that's difficult, no funding, it's not OEQC who's the master of the EIS documents, et cetera. Um, and I, I also pointed out that, you know, the bill, it's, this was exactly a duplication of last year's bill that stated that the council is the accepting authority for EIS and. So I made sure to point that out again, um, and her low end, you know, when she came back, she said that they actually went and looked at later versions of the bill with the corrections that we, you know, we had pointed out. So I think that at least was amended. If, is that correct, Robin? Yeah, so, uh, yeah, again, it was on their part. They're just recycling. So, um, we'll continue to monitor that bill and um, does this group, you know, have any, do you want to continue to do it? And, you know, for us, we, again, we just wanted to resubmit the comments last year and make that really important distinction that people understand that that's not what the council does. We don't accept, um, three forty-three documents.
Well, it's a stunning misunderstanding of the whole environmental impact assessment process in the state. And, and it's also an example of the pot calling the kettle black with the legislature being much harder to, to, to work on commenting on their process than it is to comment on EAs. It's relatively simple to comment on an EA. And, um, and you're, you know, the comments are produced in a document at the end that's available for the public very simply from downloading. So, um, I, I don't understand this bill.
My sense is since Onana and Keith have already testified, unless anybody feels real strongly, we should just keep our eyes on it and see um, what happens next. Any other, anybody else have any different feeling or disagree?
Okay.
So we move on. Um, Mary, you still okay? Stay with us for a bit?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, HB eight eight zero.
That's this, the companion bill to the twelve night to the, um, uh, ten thirty-four?
Yeah, it's the sunshine one.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can skip this one then as well.
Yep. Um, so, uh, HB nine oh one. And this one, um, I, I thought it was interesting, our, uh, Kathy, you may want to comment on this. Ted Boland was in strong opposition.
Yeah, I was a little bit startled to see that.
Yeah, me too. Uh, Deep Ed and Office of Planning supported. Uh, Keith submitted comments.
I think this is the bill that Keith submitted comments on, um, segment, it said, trying, it's going to, the result would be segmenting. Because it could be part of a big project, but if you exempt this one roadway thing, it could be, it could be a segmentation. Um, so that was the comment that he, um, he submitted.
Well, my understanding of the intent behind this bill, um, Ron, I think you worked on this with Bob Williams and Fish Ewan. That we couldn't open the Omala subdivision because we had to do an EA for the road to about the highway.
Yeah, I don't think I, I did work on that, but I've worked on dozens of other projects like this. Um, I think this isn't, this is an instance in which chapter three forty-three catches projects by the tail. And, uh, depending on who you are, um, you know, that's a heroic, wonderful thing, or it's very, very unfair.
Yeah.
That a project that is not otherwise subject to three forty-three through all the triggers that we have has, uh, gets caught by this. And I, you know, I just got a call from the planning department, um, yesterday about a similar example. And I'm personally in favor of it, although I think that, uh, there will be a lot of people who don't want to see, um, who want to see projects that have SMAs or special permits or stuff like that get drawn into the three forty-three realm because they have to, um, extend a sewer line two hundred feet or put up a stoplight or something like that, which is what we're talking about. I, I, I wanted to ask you, Mary, wh- what, what kind of legs does this bill have?
It's part of the governor's package.
Well, it's not past committee seven to one, right? Or seven to zero, sorry. First reading, including, including Lowen.
There was one no.
Oh, there was?
Yeah. But we don't, unfortunately, they haven't published the amended version yet. It says passed with amendments and, and that, to me, that's so important to see what changes they made. And they, unfortunately, they don't talk about complexity and difficulty. They don't post those amendments for a couple of days.
Well, they're really behind on committee reports because their staff is so overwhelmed with trying to be IT people. They don't have time to do their admin they were hired for. So we're gonna probably have to wait till recess and we're gonna get a boatload of committee reports. Um, if I'm not mistaken, the only amendment on this was they put an intentionally defective date in it to keep it moving. I don't think they made any changes.
So how do we feel about this one as a council?
I have a question. How would, how would?
Go ahead.
How would this bill affect the CIA?
Cultural impact assessments?
It wouldn't. It wouldn't affect the CIA.
I guess you only need to do, well, technically, if you folks recall under our current rules, you don't have to do a CIA, um, an actual CIA document even within EIS, right? You do have to assess cultural impacts. So if this bill, the only impact it would have is that if the project's no longer required to do three forty-three review, um, you, you wouldn't trigger that cultural review either separately, right?
So i- is there a consensus on, um, what we should do on this one?
Personally, I'm in support of it.
Yeah. I'm, I'm in support of it as well because I think there are times, you, you know, at least experience I've had as well where projects get sucked into three forty-three where they otherwise wouldn't. Um, I'll just leave it at that.
Um, well, that's three that are in support. Do, should we take a vote? Uh, would one of the three of you make a motion?
I move that we testify in support of the unintended consequences otherwise and, and that this bill has a necessary place in our society.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of drafting testimony in support of this bill, say aye.
Aye.
So we have um, any opposed? Okay, one, two, okay. And any abstentions? All right. So I think we need, we still need eight votes. We don't have, we don't have it on this one. It's a six-two.
And remember, individuals are, are, uh, certainly able to submit whatever testimony they wish, but we would advise you, as we did last time, to indicate that you're doing so as an individual. Okay, let's.
You know, Jason, um, I just want to, Kathy, I'd like to have you here where you have to say, you know, Ted Boland's testimony, he's not specific about the fact that he's testifying. You know, other than in the, he used the stand, he just used the canned, um, submittal form, so he checked into the box for individual. But in the text of his, um, his communication, he does not make it clear that he's testifying as a private citizen. He infers that he's still got some kind of clout and it pisses me off, like frankly.
I, I will, um.
Misuse of power.
I will counsel him on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, he represented that he, he, um, advised the environmental council until twenty twenty, which I think is incorrect as well. So, yeah, I, I will, I'll, I'll, um, I'll counsel him about that.
Okay, let's move on. Uh, um, HB thirteen eighteen. This is the one that sets up the Sustainability and Environmental Review Division at the Office of Planning. It's, it doesn't set up a separate envi- agency, a Department of Environmental Protection. It just puts a bunch of stuff into the Office of Planning. I, I, I won't waste your time with the summary. You've all read this, I'm sure. This one, we, we specifically talked about last time. What are your thoughts? What are your comments?
Yeah, I'll start. I'll let you folks know. I did some. Yeah, I'll start. I'll let you folks know. I did submit testimony in my individual capacity on this one because we hadn't had a chance to vote on it. So I actually just submitted comments, um, you know, generally stating that I support, you know, centralizing, um, departments that deal with land use, planning and, you know, environmental quality. Um, and then I did reference that because there's a portion, this bill does a lot more than Gabbard's bill, right? So the council did vote to approve Gabbard's bill, which was what we submitted and just, um, deleting the requirement uh, for appeals to the E C. So I did reference that we supported that bill and listed the reasons why we support um, that provision, that portion of this bill. Um, so I, I would say we, we continue to support this, um, particularly because we did have a meeting with Rep Lowen um, and asked her to, you know, propose something that would delete the appeals requirement.
I submitted testimony as an individual as well. For what that's worth. Um, you saw, uh, Keith, Keith submitted support, Office of Planning submitted comments. Um, and some revisions.
Office of Planning's comments included a rev- she, you know, she redlined the bill.
Right.
So if anyone is unsure what Office of Planning thinks that we will look like in that, you can just go look at Mary Alice's testimony and see what she, what she wants.
Yeah, and I believe the committee adopted the amendments as proposed by O P, right?
Yeah, I, I, okay. Um, so do you want to comment? Does, does the E C wish to comment further? Onana has commented as an individual. I've commented as an individual. Uh, Keith has commented for O E Q C. Does the E C wish to submit comments on this?
Yeah, do we want to support submit comments?
Kind of a technicality, the next time you'll have a chance to do that will be before finance. And that, and that would likely be, so it's already been to the subject committee hearing. So next time will be finance, and that's probably going to be during the budget cycle of the session. And, you know, where they have twenty-page-long agendas and they're all for three o'clock in the afternoon and you just wonder and wait when you'll really get to, you know, testify. Not sure how they're going to handle that on Zoom, but, um, we could certainly have something prepared as the E C, but finance doesn't really care what we think about concept. They want to know about money. So that's the
Now, Mary, that's a good point. I, I think, I, I think personally, we should submit comments on this. I think this is a real, this is about where we live. And I think we can relate those comments in large part to the finances to make sure that it's clear that we while we'll be glad to move, we ain't moving without some baggage and that baggage has to be bills, dollars. So I think this is an important one for us to comment on. I, I'm glad we don't have to do it by tomorrow, but um, my sense is this is, this is a critical bill for the E C to have some opinion on.
Okay, so I'm in agreement. I, I think we should absolutely submit comments. Um, the question is, do we, do we actually support the bill? And I, I didn't get a chance to look at, um, O P's, you know, changes um, in detail at the time. So I, I think that's something you maybe have to do. Um, Mary, do you think we'll have time before, when, when is finance and apologies for me not knowing?
I, I, but it'll be after cross.
Okay, so this will be after our March meeting then, because my question is, we have time to decide. I think we're all in agreement. I don't know, we'll probably submit comments, but do we actually want to affirmatively support, right?
I move that we support.
I second it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I just would, would add what I s- I emphasize what I just said previously there. In our, in our comments of support, we need to reference the dollar part of we're not asking for new money, but at the very least, there's got to be some financial support for us in Office of Planning.
Um, March fifth will be first decking. And that's the last day for the bill to be heard and passed from its final committee. So budget will probably start hearing things around the la- that end of the last week of February, beginning of March. So we might be tight, but.
Okay. Yeah. So, so we need, we do need to approve this. Okay. Any, any further discussion on H B one three one eight?
Yeah, I support the bill, but I was just curious. So with this change, are we, is the state going to see money overall? Is that, are we increasing efficiency and reducing costs? And I was just curious. That would, that would be justification for doing that.
I think that's the hope. I can't guarantee that.
Okay.
I don't think anybody's actually put a calculator to this, Roy.
Okay. I mean, yeah, if you can reduce bureaucracy and make things more efficient, then everybody wins, basically.
But it was great that, that, um, Planning, um, had positive comments. I mean, there were some corrections in her suggestions, but she didn't oppose it, which I was concerned about when this first came up. So, yeah. I, I, I think this is a good, I, I think this is an important one for us to support.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of submitting testimony in support of H B one three one eight, say aye. Okay, any opposed? All right, it's unanimous. So we'll work on, uh, drafting, drafting that up. Next.
Okay, thirteen, H B thirteen fifty.
And, and this one has, um, it has a committee report and an H D one. Woo!
And H D one takes out the environmental council. That's the one I was thinking of. We're gone. And O P does it.
That's because we get moved into O P.
Well, that would be if both bills pass, right?
Right.
Um, let's see, I, I think this was, I think they put it into, yeah, the original bill had us as the agency to do this environmental justice. And so much of the testimony was that we're the wrong place for this. And then they amended it to go to A to O P to do the, the, um, because it called for public hearings, it called for so much work that would have been impossible for a group of volunteers with no budget. So the amended version transfers it. It's not that we were left out, Ron. We were in there to, to the teeth in the beginning of the bill.
Well, they talk about it in the committee report, so.
Yes. So, so the, the end of it, or at least the most current version eliminates us from having that specific responsibility, although it's possible, the way O P would be organized, we would be given some role in it, but the director of O P is responsible rather than the director of O E Q C or the chair of E C. Does that make sense, Ron? You, you okay with that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I understand. I understand. I, I, I think the, the bill eliminates all mention of the environmental council, doesn't it?
I'd have to go back and read the amended version again. I, I, I know that it transferred it to O P. I don't remember if it's, mentions us at all.
But it's, it amends chapter three forty-one, so it's still in three forty-one.
Why does, why does three forty-one need to be amended if environmental council's not involved?
Three forty-one's our enabling statute.
Yeah, but, but if we're not involved, why would we amend our enabling statute?
The reference to three forty-one is regarding the Office of Planning conducting public hearings in, in accordance with ninety-two. And O P shall update the tool described in section three forty-one A, not less frequently, blah, blah, blah. That's we're just talking about three forty-one in terms of what the tool's supposed to accomplish.
Yeah, so maybe there's a disconnect in this bill because this really only apply, I mean, yeah, it is weird that it's in three forty-one.
Yeah. And it's, it's asking the Office of Planning in consultation with the Department of Health, D L N R and others.
And it references the environmental center as still as well.
Yeah, Justice Committee.
So there's some, and, and I, and I think the fact that we're not mentioned is, is good and bad.
Well, it mentions a buttload of other agencies and stuff, though. Just not us. We're not involved.
Because we don't have any money.
Maybe because we grumbled about being given the whole. Be careful what you ask to be exempted from.
Because when they wanted us to, because last year they talked about the hub, we said, well, nice idea, but we already do a lot of this. And we don't have any money and you're not going to give us any money, although this bill does have a blank dollar amount in it, of money they're going to give to O P.
So is it, is it our sense that, um, our, our comments might be that, um, while we appreciate the, uh, the, the relief, re- release of the E C from the major responsibility, given our purposes and our statutory responsibilities, we should be mentioned in the bill as, as a component of the Office of Planning. But we're going to be part of the Office of Planning, but.
Well, we, we assume that, I mean, it's conceivable this bill can pass and the other bill restructuring us doesn't. So I think our comments need to be separate and apart and assume the situation where thirteen eighteen doesn't pass, but thirteen fifty does. And we, we can mention that we assume, you know, this happens if thirteen eighteen happens. But in the event it doesn't, X, Y, and Z need to be cleaned up, right? That kind of, it sounds like there's some disconnect.
Yeah, are you suggesting that the comment be that, uh, this, um, environmental justice mapping be placed in the enabling statute for O I P? And not three forty, three forty-one? Because if the Office of, that will give the Office of Planning the, um,
Yeah, I, I think it makes better sense. And then if there is a desire by this council to be involved in that process, I think there would need to be a separate amendment, right, and adding us as.
Well, I think it'd be really simple. We just, where it says University of Hawaii Environmental Center, say environmental council instead. And we're fine, because that doesn't exist and we do. And, um, I know we might end up being the environmental advisory council. Uh, but hopefully the meaning would be taken.
Okay, I think that, that makes sense. Okay, so we suggest moving it to O P's. Yeah.
So I'm, I'm, uh, to, to move this along, I move that we submit comments supporting this bill. But it, but recommending that the environmental council be referenced rather than the environmental center.
Well, how about the, the O P statute?
Right.
Can you add that, Robin?
Um, sure. What, what, how would you like to add that sentence? You can speak for me, Ron.
Onana knows.
Yeah, let, let me go through this because maybe, yeah, so we add this as a new section in O, the Office of Planning statute rather than in three forty-one, right?
Right.
Okay, an office.
Okay, so I, I, I will make, I will, everybody imagine I just said that. How's that?
I just got to find, which one is Office of Planning? Hold on. Have their own statute?
Tessie, you like that?
It's probably in D B Ed, right? Kathy, two oh one.
Yes, yes, it's in D B Ed.
Mary, we moving fast enough for you? You still okay?
Yeah, let's just keep going.
Okay. We're, we're, we're good. We're, we're doing good.
Okay, so any further discussion on H B thirteen fifty? All right, um, all those in favor of submitting comments and support?
Do you have a second? Did you have a second?
Oh.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Who is my, who is the second?
Mary.
Mary, okay. Thank you, Les. Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Okay, any opposed? And any abstentions? Okay, emotion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, we're into the Senate bills. Um, S B three fifty-one. That's the one that, um, um, Senator Gabbard put in for us.
Our bill, yeah.
This is our bill. It passed unanimously. The amended version was simply technical corrections. I couldn't find anything substantive in the changes. The amended version is published, so, um, I, I don't know that we need to say anymore. Any comments, any thoughts?
Yeah, I would just say if everybody continues to be okay, we've already voted on supporting this, so we'll continue to do so as moves along.
Okay.
Okay, um, so moving right along, there's, the next one has not moved, S B four sixty-nine.
That's the companion bill to three sixty-one we already talked about.
Right.
It's identical. I've compared it line for line.
The next five are companion bills.
Right.
So we can skip those since we've had a chance to comment on their companions. Is that too much of a leap?
I think that's
Say it again, Onana.
No, I, I think that's appropriate if others are in agreement. Okay, so one, two, three, we already talked about that one.
So that's really it, because the next four are companions, four sixty-nine, eight eighty-nine, nine sixty-eight, ten thirty-four, and ten, ten fifty-five, I'm sorry, S B twelve seventy-seven, we haven't talked about.
Okay.
It's a little bit different than thirteen fifty.
How, how is it different, Robin? If you don't mind expanding on that a little bit.
Yeah, look at my comments. I think I, I tried to capture that. Um, there's a task force. It's not all about the environmental council. Um, no university or, um, nonprofits, private nonprofits. Meaningful engagement with relevant stakeholders and an advisory council from stakeholders. It's a much more thoughtful process, I think, than the other one. It, it does require um, cooperation from other state agencies. It asks a lot, I think, of them. Um, let's see.
Robin, by the other one, are you, are you talking about thirteen fifty?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that's, that's the, um, environmental justice tool as well.
Yeah, you know, um, when, I, I, I want to say, you know, when I've, I've looked at environmental justice statistics a lot for the E I Ss I've been preparing, which, which require it. And the, this is a real heavy lift they're talking about. The data are not out there. So if you can imagine trying to create a bill that would make a new census, it's, it's equivalent to that. That's how much work it's going to be. You're going to need hundreds of people working for several years to get the, the quality of data that they need. The D O H had a little tool like this for a while, and maybe Kathy, um, knows something about it. Laura was doing it, right? Uh, Kathy, do you remember that environmental justice tool that, that Laura's outfit had?
Oh, um, yeah, no, I don't remember that.
Yeah, they were promoting it, uh, E P A and D O H were promoting it. So I was wondering about that, what happened to it?
Yeah, well, you know, I mean, when I dug into that, you know, because I, those, they basically sent that as comment letters to my E I S. And I have to say it was useless. Um, you know, the, the data were so, you know, something happened on the island of, of Kauai, they would tell me. So if you got a project on Kauai, you may have an issue. You know, uh, it was not very fine-grained. There, there's no data. That was all E P A had, which is pretty much zero. So, um, it's, it's an enormous undertaking they're talking about, just to be clear.
Just, the word audit scares me.
What'd you say, Kathy? The word what?
Audit, you know. Let's go back to doing annual report if that's the case.
Well, th- this one doesn't require the council to do it, right?
No.
Yep, so, okay, as long as we're not getting audited, then that's fine.
I don't, I don't, I'm not sure how I feel about submitting comments on this one. I, I think, I agree with everything you said, Ron. It is a huge undertaking. And, um, it was crazy to have us at the head of it. So thi- this is much better. And um it was crazy to have us at the head of it, so thi- this is much better. I mean, we would be a part of it, but. I I don't know.
So do you folks think it's worth our time to, you know, submit comments on it, or do we just um? You know, stand back and and see where this one ends up?
It hasn't gone anywhere. Um it's referred to AEN and JDC. Nothing's been scheduled on it.
I I find anything that requires money is not probably not gonna pass. Seem like this is we would be a huge. Or cost I agree with.
Yeah.
I don't remember. This is Gabbard's committee, and I don't remember him saying anything about this in our meeting, Onana, yeah? If anything, he was saying there wouldn't be anything new.
Yeah, he he didn't mention it. I thought Lowen had mentioned potential um EJ stuff. But. Yeah, Gabbard certainly didn't, and you know, they. AEN had their first hearing on the set of bills that I think were really important to them, so I I don't know if this will be coming up again.
Yeah, I I forget. One of the two of them referenced, I think it was Mike, referenced a constitutional amendment. As one of their priorities.
Uh that that was Gabbard, and actually, I don't think we have that bill on here, but that one did propose to. Um, add, i- it was similar to what's it already in the constitution with, you know, the right to clean and healthful environment. So I think there was some oppos- and that bill was heard on the same day as um. What did we submit on? Was it three fifty-one? Yeah, on three fifty-one, it SB three fifty-one. So I I don't know if that one passed. I didn't follow it. I I can't recall, Robin. Maybe you remember if that.
I don't remember. I I didn't put it because it didn't reference us, so.
Right, right. I know there was some opposition because folks said, hey, this is already in the constitution, right, so.
I I'll try and track it down.
Okay. But, okay, I'm getting kind of lukewarm feelings from folks on SB twelve seventy-seven. Uh for me, I think maybe we just stand back. But you know, if this group.
Don't use the term stand back anymore.
Yeah, sorry.
We can't.
Okay, why can't you stand out? Well, can you?
Stand back and stand by, folks.
Will you stand down? No, no. All right, I think we take no action on this.
Let's monitor, just monitor.
Monitor, monitor, right, okay. Um, because it sounds like we do have, we do have a handful of bills that are are moving and we're, we are monitoring and. Going to be more active in, so um. Well, thank you for that. If we, Mary, so I can maybe make the last fifteen minutes of your meeting, but before you go, so we. Took action on the bills that we want to testify on. I do, um. I don't know if it's appropriate. As a chair, I typically try not to make motions, but the next agenda item. And Kathy, tell me if it's inappropriate, but I'll just do it for ease. You know, I moved to authorize um. Robin and I, and actually, we do have Ron helping, so. Can we, how many people can we authorize to work on drafting testimony? Um, I would say I'd move. Yeah, I I I think with two were safer, right?
Yeah, I think with two you're safer.
So can we still have Ron, at least, you know, because we did, there were some substantive ones that we asked Ron to provide comments on. And he can provide, you know, bullet points. That's still appropriate, and. Um, you know, consistent with what we've done before, I I would move that, you know, me and Robin be allowed to draft testimony on behalf of the council. Consistent with the action that we took today for the ones that we are either going to draft testimony and support or provide comments on. Okay, Ron, seconds.
Actually, I move it.
Oh, you move it. Ron moves it. Okay, thank you.
Mary seconds it. Okay, Mary. That way it's neither of you in the motion.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, is there any further discussion on this? And of course, if somebody else wants to take the helm of drafting testimony and submitting. I'm I am open to that.
Onana writes writes really good testimony, and her performance as a presenter was excellent as well, so. I think we're in good hands.
It's getting better. It's getting better. It's not excellent, but thank you for being gracious. Um. Okay, and if no further discussion, um all those in favor? All right, do we have any opposed? Okay, and any, where are you opposed, Tessie? Oh, any abstentions? Thank you. Um, okay, thank you, folks. So we we accomplished our action items. Mary, if you have to go to your other meeting, go ahead. I do. What I had wanted to do, maybe Kathy can do it, you know, Keith couldn't be here, was we did want to kind of hear OEQC's uh. Points and what they're testifying on. I know Kathy, you jumped in when OEQC did submit testimony. Was there anything else that you wanted to update this group on? That OEQC is following, but that, you know, isn't on the council's radar?
Um.
Yeah, either you or Les, sorry.
Well, I don't think so, Les.
Uh, no, um, actually, the only two bills that we're not tracking were the uh. Everything else is similar to the list Robin gave, except for the sunshine law bills. So we're pretty much tracking the same bills that you guys are.
Thanks, Mary.
Bye, Mary.
Bye.
Yeah, I thi- this list that you have here today was my attempt at combining what had, what Keith had sent. Previously, um and Kathy had put some in there as well. Um, so.
Okay. So I was taking some notes, folks.
Ron, just for um the anal side of this conversation. You, can you get those comments, those bullets to Onana and I in a week? Is that reasonable for you?
Oh, I can definitely get them um this weekend.
Okay, even better.
I'll I'll try to get them tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Did we lose Makala, too?
Oh, I think we did. I think she dropped off as well. Okay, well, I appreciate you folks running through that. We had scheduled time through four o'clock, so. Um, I'll respond to Keith and Mahina, but we're probably logging off early, but if there's any. Again, we can't take action on anything else, but if there's any further discussion, I think we do have a little bit of time. Um, if anybody wanted to go a little bit deeper into anything. Oh, there's Makala.
I I thought this was just. No place on the agenda for this, but I thought this was a really good conversation, and I. I applaud everybody for going through all these bills, a lot of reading, and um. Your comments were very helpful.
Well, thanks for organizing it so well. That was, that that really helped.
Yes, and if there are other bills that may, you know, Robin's really great at this, but there's other bills that, you know, weren't on the list that you folks think are. Worthy of the council's time or impact the council, um, you know, let us know. We'll try to try to track them. It's. It's been a really busy season so far, yeah.
It's easy to add these, add to the list, so if anybody has anything else. I take no ownership of of having caught every one, so please send them to me.
Can I, can I just ask a generic question, Onana, especially for you, um, since you've been doing this? It's it's such a new thing to not be able to submit late testimony. It's such a new thing. Was there discussion of that, or was it an edict from the clouds?
You know, I don't know, because I actually, so, you know, Robin's been great at keeping on me and saying, hey, this bill's coming up. We need to get testimony. Um, notwithstanding, I am a procrastinator, and I I just had stuff, so. I got our testimony on thirteen eighteen. You know, I thought I got them both in at eight fifty-nine. One got in at nine AM, it was nine AM, and they still marked it as late, even though nine AM was technically the deadline. And there was another comment who submitted also at nine o'clock, and they weren't marked as late, so I was a little. Upset about that, but you know, it got in. So I, yeah, I don't know for a fact that they're not accepting. Um, late testimony because, again, for that particular, and this is for Lowen's um committee for, what was it, EEP? Um, it did display our late testimony. Um, as for the oral testimony, so you do have to submit written testimony, and I don't know what would happen if you. Submitted late. And requested the Zoom link if they're just not going to give it to you. Maybe, Robin, you can do it. For me, I've been having issues with the Zoom anyways. Um, and so for Tuesday's hearing, I got one, one thing in at eight fifty-nine, one at nine o'clock. I didn't get my Zoom link. And so I contacted or emailed, you know, Rep. Lowen directly and said, hey, I'm hoping some staff person is monitoring this. Requested a link. I didn't get it. And about, you know, thirty minutes into the hearing, or actually, it was longer, it was about fifty minutes into the hearing. Thankfully, we were were later. Um, they sent me a link. But the same thing happened with um AEN where I submitted well on time. Um, I requested a Zoom link, and they still didn't send it to me, so a couple of minutes before I called. And let them know, and then they they emailed it to me, so. Um, I spoke to a couple of other folks who said they've also been having issues with the Zoom link. Um, but it can't be everybody because most people were on on time. Um, although the AEN hearing started, what was it, fifteen, twenty minutes late, Robin?
Yeah.
Yeah, and and on that end, I don't think they were having trouble with the Zoom, because once I finally got the Zoom link, I logged on and it was working perfectly. I think they had a hard time um linking it to the YouTube livestream. So, so, yeah, Makala, I'm sorry, that doesn't answer the question. As far as I know, late testimony will show up. Um, and I've been having luck, or I've been having bad luck in getting the links, but as soon as I call them or email them, they send me a link.
I mean, it always had, late testimony always had what I considered to be quite rude. Large red stamp that said late. Yeah, 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 you know, but um. But it was never like, you know, you're, you know, you're not, you can't participate at all. The other thing. I I know this is, you know. Making spaghetti all the time. Legislation policy is like that, but it sure seems to me like there's a lot of just. Um, errors. There's just a lot of stuff. I mean, just the stuff that we talked about today. Somebody's not, I mean, are are they just that stressed with the money part? Are they short? Because, I mean, I don't know what's going on, but. It 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 seems to me like, you know, sticking environmental council where. It has no business being and and leaving it up to people like us to erase it and and note it and get it out of there. We could get some really bad consequences of just, you know, extraneous area. Crud like this, that just, just in what we talked about today, there was probably five or six items that had a mistake. Like that, a serious mistake.
Big mistake.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't speak to why it happens. This is my personal take, and I I won't, you know, I I don't know. Mary, Mary actually probably has a lot more. And and yourself more experience with the legislature than I do, but my take is that there's a couple of things. One, they're getting these packages ready. As quickly as possible, so mistakes are going to be made, but um more, number two, more fundamentally. Is people don't know what departments in the state do. People don't know what we do. Um, I've had a couple of. Conversations, and I I won't say with who, but um people don't know what agencies do. And so they think like, you know, the mistake with us accepting EAs and EISs is because we do their roles. I mean. People think we do all things involve, same, you know, same for, that's what they think OEQC does, so. I think it's just people don't know what other parts of government are doing.
I also think, I also think there's people within agencies that don't know what that agency does.
Yep, no, absolutely. Yeah, so so part of this process, and I don't know if the legis, I I really only became involved with doing. You know, this legislature stuff when I became Chair of the Council, um, thanks to everybody's volunteering me that. This is now part of my role, but um it it is interesting, so it's a learning experience for me. So this is my take based on a very, you know, just over the last, you know, two and a half, three years of being involved with it, but.
There's always been little, little bits and pieces here and there. That's not, I mean, I've been doing this a long time. It's it's always been. Wait a minute, that's not really what you want, and a variety of errata, but that's not what this is. This is serious content stuff, and this is sloppy writing and sloppy legislation, and I I take your point. It it's partially because they don't know who does what, but um I I. Boy, I'm looking for a pla- and I'm not asking you to do. I'm looking for a place to say all that, because this is, it's scary.
Yeah, it's 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 interesting. I don't know if it's just, you know, partially with things being so rushed. Um, for me, as a layperson, I mean, I've always kind of thought the legislative session should be longer than the three months that it is, because you're getting these really. Rushed documents. I mean, I see why they do it, but I'm like, okay, these are elected officials, maybe they could do for, you know, six months or something. Um, but, yeah, it. Yeah, who knows? It could be a combination of. Maybe they feel like they need to take action on more, and I'm totally speculating, take more action now that things are. Virtual, social media is so much more widespread, so they have to be a little bit more gung ho, because some of the bills that they're proposing, and you know, there's even one. Last year with the cultural impact assessments where, you know, I I went to one of the introducers and I said, hey. How come you didn't come talk to us before you introduced this? You know, because there's just so many things wrong with that one, and we provided comments on it, um, and they're just like, oh, we, you know, we got to get something out. So I I I think it's a lot of that. Hi, Mahina. So we actually, Mary had to leave. She had she had a meeting, so we we rushed through everything really quick. Because we wouldn't have had quorum had she left. So we we actually already did all our voting. We're kind of just talking story now. Um, and maybe you have insights, so Makala was asking.
Such a mess. I want to know why it's all such a mess this year, and I want to, I want to relate it somehow to. Budget angst and and COVID, but I'm not making the the connection particularly. I'm going to grumble to somebody. I'm just trying to determine who, because. Not okay. There's a lot of stuff that, um, I mean, ju- just look at our little list today, just our little list. It's three thousand bills introduced, and our little list, we had all this stuff that was so off. The mark, you know, it it makes me want to just to oppose everything, Onana. It makes me want to say, no, you guys don't get to do anything until you learn how to. Write.
So I was just going to say, I was like, it reminds me, there was a person who used to go to all of. The meetings of a particular agency. And on every single item testified, not anything to do with the agenda item, but on the gripes he had with the process generally. I'm not suggesting that you do that, but it 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 sounds like, you know, I mean, you could just. If you want to get it out there and get people to pay attention, it it's a way to do it, right?
Well, it concerns me because from the community standpoint, we've seen some real pluses and advantages to Zoom. We don't have to fly. We don't have to, you know, I mean, just just cost-wise. The opportunity for participat- participation is really expanded. It's an opportunity. But that's on the, on the communities, on the public side, but then when you get there, the product that you're working with is junk. So why should, you know, I mean, i- it's not, it's it's not getting better together, right?
Yeah, I mean, if that's something that's very con- I concerning, and I'm not suggesting we do it, but it, I mean. An open letter to the legislature or an editorial on civil beat saying, hey, we're noticing.
Well, you just look at what, where we were mentioned, just the environmental council and where we were mentioned. Uh, in error, not by accident, not manining, in serious error. Um. Yeah, I don't know. Maybe I'm just gonna dump it all on this.
Yeah, it's, I, and I think that's part of it. It's part of our job as, you know, it's educating others on what we do, so that that's what we're trying to do through our testimony is. Where we're seeing kind of these blatant um. Errors as to what we do or what we, what we are capable of doing. I, you know, I think it's good. We we kind of identified the ones with like, hey, we should say something. And and tha- that's exactly the reason why, so we, I don't think we can fix the process as a whole. Be our testimony, um, that'll take time, but at least we can address the things that, you know, affect us, so. Yeah, otherwise, I do think the, I I think the ledge process, I like, I like it by Zoom a lot better. I think it's. Less nerve-wracking, you're spending a lot less time, um, a lot less wasted time, because at least, you know, you can work until your bill comes up. And then instead of sitting in a room, you know, for hours on end, not knowing, so.
The only dis- the only disadvantage is the networking that occurs in the halls and the networking that occurs at the, at the rail. Um, as a community person, you know, we always tried to make, you know. Fifteen things happen while we bought one plane ticket, um, and I missed, I missed that for sure.
Yeah, hopefully by twenty twenty-two, uh, you know, they think they're anticipating everybody will be vaccinated. By about summertime, right, or at least close to enough where you have herd immunity, so hopefully by next session. They do it, but yeah, I I hope they do still allow participation for folks who aren't physically here, because again, yeah, it is a disadvantage to. Those on the neighbor islands, um, or even on the other side of Honolulu. I mean, it's hard to get. Get there sometimes, right, so. But, yeah, I can.
Thanks for allowing me to 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 vent. I I I think, you know, just looking at our little list, that was, that was ridiculous.
Yeah, no worries. So I'll just run quickly through Mahina, if you have the list, just to let you know what the council voted on. To write comments, um, starting from the top. Let's see. So HB three. So HB three sixty-one, we did vote to submit comments. Let's see, we are not gonna do four twenty-three because we don't think it's gonna move forward. We also decided to skip, same for HB six ninety-six. Um, for HB eight forty-two, we recycled our testimony on this bill from last year. Um, we'll we'll continue to monitor it. HB eight eighty, we're not gonna take any position on. Um, HB nine oh one, let's see, we decided, yeah, we're also not going to. Let's see. Wait, we said we're not doing this one, right? Nine oh one?
Skip, yeah.
Yeah, we're skipping. Okay, just checking. Oh, yeah, we did, we actually did vote on it, but we didn't agree, so we're not doing that. Thirteen eighteen, we are gonna continue to submit testimony on this and monitor it. Um, also in support, thirteen fifty, we're gonna submit comments on, let's see, yeah. All right, uh HB three fifty-one, we're gonna continue to monitor this, monitor this as well and submit testimony. We've already submitted once. Uh SB twelve seventy-seven, let's see, oh, we skipped. So we skipped a lot from four sixty-nine until we hit twelve seventy-seven, because those are all companion bills. And then for twelve seventy-seven, we are going to submit testimony. Um, let's see. Yeah, we're gonna submit comments, right, on that one? Yeah.
Which one?
Twelve seventy-seven?
I thought it was twelve ninety-two.
Twelve, twelve seventy-seven, we were gonna monitor.
Oh, twelve seventy-seven, monitor, thank you. Yeah, and then, yeah, twelve seventy-two, we, twelve ninety-two.
And Ron was gonna gonna draft some bullet points for that.
Okay.
Ron was gonna do some bullets on three six, HB three sixty-one and SB twelve ninety-two. Okay.
Thank you.
And then Mahina, all of those comments, you were gonna be writing all of the testimony to all of the bills that we just talked about, because you weren't here, so.
And testifying in person.
That's right, and in person.
Yeah, that that's, that's really all we had, um. Any other?
And the other, the only other thing is that um the council authorized um Onana and I to uh make the testimony. To prepare it and or do it in person. We didn't distinguish that, but. Onana, you're moot.
I said yes, all of the above. Okay. Okay, uh, anybody else have anything that they need to ask? My light is censored, keeps going off if I don't move. Um, yeah, a- anything else? If not, I'll go ahead and I know everybody's got a lot to do. And our next meeting is March second. We're starting the regular council meeting at one thirty. Um, and Les will be in touch with everybody, the the committee chair, your agendas, if you're gonna be holding meetings in March.
I do anticipate an exemptions committee meeting.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, so I I think, and I think I know is meeting next week, actually, so. Okay.
And probably the ledge committee should meet as well.
Okay, sounds good. And then Rule, Sproles meeting again? Yep, all right. And then just a reminder, um, tomorrow is the deadline to get your list of contacts for the council survey. Um, so make sure, if you haven't already, you submit that to Les and then Les will work with. Um, I know to compile and and get the survey out, right?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
One more thing.
Yes, go ahead, Ron.
Who got a vaccine?
Yay.
I'm, I may be the only, the the only RN on the council. And I have an eighty-one-year-old husband. And I have intellectually chosen to wait for the Johnson and Johnson.
That's the one shot, right? Okay.
And it's not just because of that, it's because of what it is and how it was processed. That I think my husband will be able to tolerate it better and um. And I believe the way we're setting this whole thing up is that we're gonna need a booster like a flu shot every year anyway. And um, I I I just, yeah, I think for us, it's the best decision.
Do you, do you mind if I ask why? I'm sorry, folks need to leave. This is, I'm just curious.
Um, I I I like the process they went through for um. For testing, the the Johnson and Johnson's been looking at this actually longer than Moderna and and Pfizer. Um, and um, I've been, I'm well-connected. I think you know, I'm on, I'm one of the founders of the urgent care here on the North Shore. And I'm connected with a lot of um ICU and ER docs. Um, and um. They really appreciated the Johnson and Johnson process. Um, the science of it, the the process of it. Not that it was tested better or worse or anything like that, just, it's just different. Um, um, they really like the fact that it's um safer to ship. That there's no compromise, potential for compromise. Um, they all tell me that we will be needing boosters anyway. So you, you know, the fact that you get the one and then you get the second to provide the boost, you're gonna need that anyhow. Um, because the variants are, um, some of the the two latest variants are, I mean, you almost can't call them a variant. They're really a different, they're really a different boogie, you know, so. Um, yeah, that's, that's why, um, I just happen to be connected with a whole bunch of people that are up to here with COVID.
Yeah, no, thank, thank you for sharing. I I've been curious. I have a good friend of mine who gave birth in December and she's a healthcare worker. And she got the Moderna vaccine and she had severe reactions for both shots, um, including one where she got hives on her whole body. So it it's, it's interesting and then my my sister, I think, is taking the Pfizer this weekend. So we'll s- we'll see how she reacts.
Yeah, the the docs, the docs did did encourage me to get the Pfizer over the Moderna, but um. If they were given their druthers, because I'm pretty good about staying home. Um, they they said, I, we really think, you know, at this point, waiting, especially since Kauai is so safe, yeah? So it, there's a lot of factors involved about exposure and all the rest of it. Um, and and I I am so that I was one of the first medical. Professionals that they tested the very first flu vaccine on. And um I lost the ability to walk for forty-eight hours.
Wow.
So it scared me. Yes, I get a flu vaccine, because it's different now. Those were the the days of live vaccine where they really tried to kill you, you know, are over, but um, but. So it's not that I'm not, you know, didn't have a bad experience, but I think um. I think all in all, I'm gonna be really happy to get a COVID shot every year.
I don't know what vaccine Robin got, but it looks like he's smarter and better-looking and.
Yeah, that's it, Ron. I I, you you got my secret. No, we got the Moderna. We, Lenai, Lenai has done um um an amazing job in expanding the quantity of people that have been vaccinated. I'm seventy-four and they put out a notice about a month ago for people sixty-five and older. Because they had more than they needed, first responders, and many first responders didn't take it. They were young, they didn't, they felt, you know, let's give it to the older people first or we don't want it and so we've had two. Two full quote mass end quote vaccination days in the parking lots. And the last one, when we got our second shot, they they gave four hundred injections that day and, and you know, our population's three thousand, so. It's an amazing, amazing gift to this community.
First responders that are that are choosing not to at this point, because we have so many fragile, we have fragile kupuna. Uh, in very isolated rural areas like Hyanna that it, you know, you know, so, and they know their people. You know, our our medical professionals know these people personally, you know, because we're small, right? And so, um, if they could have said, I'll I'll awake for mine and give it to Auntie Mary, they would have, if they could have.
Well, we had, um, th- they did give the seventy-five and older first shot. They they were, they they all got their shots. Uh, before we were invited to participate and that was, so they got the first responders. But in terms of side effects of the second Moderna, um, Sally had some. She was tired and her arm was really sore. And she got flu-like symptoms, but without the coughing or the runny nose, I had, I had nothing, so.
Well, I can, I'll explain that to you later.
As for being more handsome, you tell me how to do that, Ron. I want to follow your your lead on that. I could use that help.
It just makes your beards grow.
Yeah, it does that. Thank you, everybody.
Try, thanks for trying, Mahina.